Welcome to the November 21st meeting of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board. At this time, I'd like Mr. Vesey to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In addition, I'll just say a few words of invocation. I'd like to recognize the challenging and important work that we're going to do here tonight, and the presence of all the residents, applicants, the staff, the volunteers on the board. And we could all ask for guidance in making the best decisions for the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Be seated. I'm going to go through a brief statement of explaining the function of the Planning and Zoning Board. Again, welcome to the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board. The purpose of the Board is to conduct public hearings on the items that come before it. The Planning and Zoning Board has reviewed the evidence in the agenda packet for each item on the agenda in this evening, including the application materials and the staff report. The Board will consider that evidence along with any new evidence or testimony provided at the public hearing tonight. The Board will consider all of the information provided at this hearing in accordance with the quasi-judicial procedures by which we are bound, which will be explained by our attorney shortly here. The Board uses these procedures to judge whether the application meets the intent of the city's adopted comprehensive plan and future land use map, and whether the application conforms to the city's currently adopted land development code and zoning atlas. The Board will render a decision on each item in the form of a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will take the final action on the item. The general hearing procedure for each item called by the Chair is as follows: Staff presentation followed by applicant presentation, affected party presentation, public input, staff and applicant rebuttal, and finally, Board motion, discussion, and vote. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuskudis? Mr. Vesey?
Here.
Mr. Kolyanis? Mr. Zimbellas?
Here.
Ms. Frences?
Here.
Mr. Rockline?
Here.
Ms. Early is in the audience.
Okay, we do have less than a full Board present, so applicants, I think we're only missing one, but applicants may choose to have their item deferred to another meeting if they feel this could be detrimental to them. If anyone wishes to do that, approach the podium and ask for a deferral. And we will announce the deferrals to a date certain or a date to be advertised in the future. Seeing none, I would ask our attorney to go over the quasi-judicial procedures that we must follow.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Regina Kardashian, and I'm here to advise you this evening. Everybody at their place should have Resolution 2022-02, which is your adopted and currently in effect rules of procedure. And then, in addition to that, you should have a PowerPoint handout that says quasi-judicial proceedings, the rules of playing judge and jury. Since this is the first time I've sat with your Board, I just wanted, instead of just doing the regular announcement, I wanted to go ahead and give you an overview. Now, I'm going to tell you that this is normally an hour-long presentation, but due to the size of your agenda and everything you all have going on this night, I'm going to condense it down and hopefully get it done in about 10 to 15 minutes, okay? So I'm going to basically kind of hit the high points and just make sure you have enough information so that we're all on the same page as we move forward here tonight. So one of the first things everybody usually asks is why do we even have to have these? And why are quasi-judicial and procedure rules important? And that's kind of twofold, as for the orderly conduct of government business and for civility among members and among the public and people who may have differing opinions. So that's the two main reasons that we have a lot of these procedures and things in place. Now, moving on to the second page, here's what quasi-judicial actually means. And this is how it's defined by case law, is that it has an identifiable impact on a limited number of persons or property interests, is contingent on facts arrived at from and distinct from alternatives presented at the local government hearing, and it is viewed as an application of policy. So that's the most important for you to remember. And that's because you actually have two separate roles. You have your quasi-judicial role, and then you also have a legislative function that's been delegated to you. So when you're having public hearings, it's important to differentiate between the ones that are actually the application of the law and the ones that you're applying the law. So if it's quasi-judicial, that means you are taking the established criteria, whatever is already in the code of ordinances, and you are applying that criteria to the application that is before you. And we'll get into that in just another minute. But that's the most important distinction here, is it's the application of previously established criteria to the facts and evidence that are going to be presented to you in the hearing. Moving on to the next page. So a big important piece of this is being able to follow both procedural and substantive due process, and that's both in how the codes are written and how you carry out those codes in practice. So when you look at this, you have to make sure that what you're doing is giving the applicants the opportunity to be heard. You're giving staff and the city the opportunity to be heard. And then you're taking all that information and you're applying it to the code of ordinances. And that becomes very important, not just in terms of how you're receiving the evidence, but also in terms of making sure that you are using and applying the correct law. Because the correct law, if you're not applying the correct law, then that can be challenged all the way up, at every different level of review as you move through the court system. If you are not applying the correct law, then it doesn't matter what you do here. So we always want to make sure that we're doing that and we're taking the criteria that's already in the code and using that. So you could see right below that top slide, I have the three things that the circuit court would review if they were reviewing. Now, everything that you do goes up to the Board of Commissioners, right? However, it becomes part of a greater hearing record that becomes important for the Board of Commissioners review and then also on appeal. So you want to make sure that at every stage of the proceeding, you're following what needs to be done and building that record so that it's clear what decisions you're making, why you're making those decisions, and what you're using to make those decisions. So the three items that you would see on appeal are whether or not procedural due process was afforded to the applicant, whether the administrative body applied the correct law, and whether its findings are supported by competent substantial evidence. Okay, moving on to the next page. So in terms of procedural due process and what that requires, that's why we have all hearing, all testimony at these hearings is always under oath. Otherwise, it undermines the basis of your decision, and it actually is a crime under state law to provide false testimony, evidence, or writings to a body for your official decision that are false. So it is a big deal, especially if it's the testimony and evidence that you're receiving that is the basis of your decision. Both the applicant and the public have to be given a reasonable opportunity to present what they have to say and to make requests for additional information and to rebut the information that is presented. Although you do not have to strictly follow the rules of evidence in these proceedings, your findings should not solely be based on hearsay. If all you're basing it on is hearsay, then that's questionable, and that certainly could be subject to appeal down the road, too. Also, because you are taking in this evidence and taking in this testimony within the confines of a quasi-judicial proceeding, that means that all ex parte communications have to be disclosed at the hearing, right? Now, an ex parte communication is information or communications that you receive outside of the hearing. Now, we're doing this process of Board education, but I would say that there's a majority of citizens out there that think that they have ready access to you and that they can come talk to you about their applications. That is not true. So if an applicant ever comes up to talk to you, other Board members, well, first of all, Board members would be a subject of that legislation, but other folks from the city that would want to talk to you about something that's going to come before you in a quasi-judicial proceeding, it becomes very imperative that you disclose that at the beginning of the hearing, right? Because if you don't disclose it and then it comes to light later, there's a presumption that there's a fundamental flaw with your hearing, right? Because you received evidence and information that formed the basis of your decision without disclosing that in the hearing. That's a rebuttable presumption that then you can say on the record, hey, somebody said this to me or gave me this, but I can still make my determination based on the information that's presented here today. So typically, what I do is at the beginning of a hearing, when you have your case number that's announced and all of that, I will ask if any Board member has a quasi-judicial ex parte disclosure or if any Board member has a conflict of interest, okay? So keep that in mind as we move forward. And I'm already kind of went through some of the information on that next page, page five. And again, going back to, am I applying the correct law? That becomes very important for, again, for you to distinguish because you have to apply the law as it exists today. Because there's rights that are vested to the applicants and property owners under the law as it exists today, and you cannot change the law with just a motion. You cannot change the law without following the proper procedures that are provided in the state statute and under the Constitution. So when you are taking that criteria and that information and you are applying it to the facts and testimony that are presented to you, you have to remember that you're doing it as it exists and not as you would like it to be. If you want it to be a different way, you have a different procedure for that. That is your legislative function, and you can do that. And it does have to go through the Board of Commissioners in order to make that law effective. That is not something that you have plenary authority to do here as you sit today. Also, the applicant does have the burden of proof. So that burden of proof means the applicant has to prove to you that they meet that criteria, they meet those standards, and all of that is contained in their application and in the testimony and evidence that they are bringing to you. So that is their burden, not the city's, and that they have to meet. So I talked about everything in quasi-judicial hearings, everything has to be supported by competent substantial evidence. And so how the law defines that is findings of fact, expert testimony, and citizen testimony. And basically, when you're making your decisions and making your orders, you are making findings. You're making findings of fact and conclusions of law that are then being transmitted to the Board of Commissioners, right, for the ultimate decision. Now, on that bottom thing, I have the differentiation between unacceptable and acceptable citizen testimony. A lot of times, citizens will want to come up and give their opinion on something. And that goes to the weight and credibility of the information that they're giving you. You know, anybody for their four minutes, you know, as long as they're not being disruptive or disrespectful can pretty much come up and say anything, right? But you all have to have that filter of, are they just giving me an opinion? Or are they giving me observable facts and evidence that I can apply to what's going on here? So your expert testimony are going to be people who have specialized knowledge, training, or experience. That's your staff, who, you know, for the most part, does this day in and day out, right? That's engineers, architects, people who have that level of specialized skill and knowledge to give what would be, under the law, a weighted opinion that would be considered expert testimony. Moving on to page six. After you have that first circuit court review with those three items that were the basis of appeal, then if it survives that, then it goes to the district courts of appeal. And there's two things that they look at at the district court level. And the first one is procedural due process. So again, you're still there, you're looking at that, and then whether or not you departed from the essential requirements of law. So you see that same emphasis being put on whether or not you're meeting these constitutional standards and whether or not you're applying and moving through the correct law. So I also have down there on the bottom of page seven, basically, the hearing procedure. You open the public hearing, staff will make their presentation, the applicant will make their presentation. You have the opportunity for proponents and opponents to come up and speak on the application. Then you have the opportunity for both city staff and for the applicant to provide any rebuttal after the close of the, after you hear from the proponents and opponents. Then, that's when you close the public hearing, is when you're done taking your evidence. So after that, that's when you all, as a Board, have those discussions of, this is what I think, and this is how I think this should be, and you make your motion and decide whether or not you're going to recommend approval or denial of the application before you. And then I just have quickly here on your legislative procedures, you'll see you still have the opportunity for them to, the public, to speak on behalf of or against whatever particular piece of legislation you're looking to have. And the big thing that's different in your legislative versus your quasi-judicial is you're making the law, and when you're making the law, the courts use what's called the fairly debatable standard. And the fairly debatable standard has sort of carried through over a couple decades here, where it talks about the court not being able to second-guess the legislative function because we have the separation of powers under the Constitution. So that's just a very high-level view up there. And then my name and contact information is in the back on the very last slide. So for tonight, since we do have a healthy agenda, I will let everybody know that pursuant to your rules of procedure, citizens, so your proponents and opponents each have four minutes. For your presentations, I am requesting that the Chair establish 20-minute time limits for staff, for the city's presentation, and for applicant presentation, so we can make sure we keep that moving today. And then for rebuttal, no more than 10 minutes each side. That doesn't mean you have to use all that time, but I just want to make sure that we have a little bit of an idea here so that we can move these larger items forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we need to do that.
Okay. So with that, I will ask anybody in the audience who is going to be providing testimony to please go ahead and stand. And everybody raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth on the matters before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board here this evening? All right, thank you. So when you get up to speak, please say your name, your address, and indicate whether or not you have taken the oath prior to proceeding with your testimony. Mr. Chairman?
All right, that brings us to item five on our agenda, Application 22-90, site plan approval for Susanna 1 for a townhome development located at the northeast corner of South Gross Avenue and East Boyer Street. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Can I make, ask a point of order?
Sure.
Who's going to, is someone going to be maintaining these times? Are you going to take care of the times? Okay, good, thank you.
Ali Keane, Senior Planner with Planning and Zoning. The property is located here outlined in yellow on the screen at the northeast corner of South Gross Avenue and East Boyer Street. The property, as well as the surrounding properties to the east, west, and south, are located within the RM Residential Multi-Family Zoning District. The area to the north, and all shaded in gray, is the city's special area plan. And there's some R60 zoning south of the property, which is one and two-family residential. The applicants are here today seeking site plan approval for the Susanna 1 project. This is a six-unit multifamily development. They are proposing a one-story building that is oriented towards both the Boyer and Gross street frontages. The code requires a minimum of 10 parking spaces for the project, and the applicants are providing 10 onsite parking spaces. They have provided a landscaping plan that is compliant with all of the land development code requirements, including screening of the onsite parking lot. This is a look at the proposed site plan, and just for emphasis, I've outlined the building footprint in blue here. Again, it's oriented towards West Gross Avenue and Boyer Street, and the parking is interior to the site and access from an alley along the north property line. The site plan does indicate that the building will not obstruct any of the required site visibility triangles, which are shown at the intersections, as well as along their driveway. They're also proposing a 10-spot parking lot behind the building and then onsite stormwater pond. As some of you may recall, the applicant was before you back in May of this year. They were asking for conditional use approval of an alternative dimensional plan. What they were seeking was reduced setbacks for their front, side, and rear yards. And ultimately, the Board of Commissioners did approve that conditional use approval. So now they're here today with the final site plan. The conditional use approved reduced setbacks to be a minimum front yard of four feet, a minimum rear yard of 3.33 feet, and a minimum side yard of 3.58 feet. Those reduced yards are really aimed at creating a more urban project that could be closer to the street, the parking interior and access from the alley. And the reduced setbacks allowed them to do that. Through the refinement of the site plan, they have actually have slightly larger setbacks that are proposed before you. Most significantly is the side yard, which is the east property line along here. Instead of being at a 3.6-foot setback, they're actually able to obtain a minimum of 6.42 feet. But they are within the minimum ranges that were approved under that conditional use. These are the building elevations provided by the applicant. These, again, are consistent with the conceptual plan that you received during the conditional use approval, with the exception of the roof line. The conditional use rendering did show a pitched roof, and here they've modified that to be a flat roof. But it still has the same building articulation, meaning there's setback walls and recessed areas of the building, so it's not a flat wall. Each unit still has direct access from their front door to the public sidewalks, and there are porches for each of the units. With the conditional use approval, the Board did include two conditions that were to be addressed at the site plan during the site plan process. The first was buffering of the parking lot from the adjacent property shall be addressed during the site plan process. And this is the area that we're talking about in the blue outline. What you're looking at here is the landscaping plan. And again, as I mentioned, it does meet all the requirements of the Land Development Code, including the screening requirements. That includes a hedge row along the property line, as well as four trees which are planted around the pond. And typically, a buffer yard is to be a minimum of eight feet wide. In this case, because the pond is located in that area, it actually provides a larger separation than eight feet. The second condition was that the applicant would work with staff and waste management for a workable solution for collection and disposal of solid waste. The applicants are proposing to use individual toters instead of a dumpster onsite. And each resident would be required to take their toter out to the street each week for pickup. They have provided an area on the north side of the property here to store the toters. And again, they'll have to take them to the street for pickup. And this was reviewed by both Public Works and Waste Management, and it was deemed acceptable and appropriate for this project. With that, staff does recommend approval of the site plan under Resolution 2022-44. We do have four standard conditions for the approval. The first is that the site construction plans be consistent with the approved site plan. Second, details for all site lighting, including product sheets showing shielded fixtures, will be provided with their building permit application. The third is the developer will be required to comply with the public art program if the project exceeds $1 million. And the fourth is the site plan will expire one year from the effective date unless they've made an application for the building permit. And then just for one point of clarification, you may have noticed in your agenda materials that there was another slide in the presentation referencing the T4C transect zone. We noticed that that was included in error and not relevant to this project, so I admitted it from this presentation, but just for a point of record. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Do members of the Board have questions for staff?
You said you have a question? Let me ask, the buffering issue, is staff satisfied that that meets an acceptable buffering?
Yes, yeah, it does meet what we require typically for a screening for properties that are multifamily next to a residential property. So it does comply with that, and being that the stormwater pond is in that location as well, it just provides additional distance between the parking lot and that adjacent property, so yes.
Okay, and what was the Board of Commissioners's issue with that?
Just that we addressed it at site plan level. So making sure that that provision was met.
Is the, is the alley paved right now?
It is not. The applicants will be improving it up to their property to get access.
Okay, so the alley will be paved at the applicant's expense?
Correct.
Okay, that's a question there. And are we satisfied with the size of these parking spaces?
Yes, they meet the required size.
It seems kind of tight getting...
Parking space, they're required to be nine by 18 feet.
And how about the space between the parking spaces?
It's required to be 24 feet, and it does meet the...
It's that?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, okay. All right, that was my questions.
Any other questions from board members?
No, you haven't been sworn in yet, so...
Other questions from the board?
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to the toters, which are dumpster, Inluwa dumpsters, I just want to unpack that just a little bit. So is the concept there that instead of having a dumpster space that requires the turnaround for the truck and all the things that come with that, that this is maybe a better alternative to that requirement? Would that be fair?
Yes, yeah, the main reason was how to get, if they had a dumpster onsite, how would they be able to maneuver a trash truck through the alley into the parking space? And this is a practice that we've used in some other projects throughout the community. And like I said, Public Works and Waste Management are comfortable with it, with the toter.
I am too. I guess it seems to be a good solution maybe to be used more to reduce that requirement and get better use out of the space? That's all.
Other board member questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Would anyone like to ask questions of the applicant? All right, that brings us to public comments. Have anyone here speaking in favor of this proposal? Seeing none, do we have anyone wishing to speak against this proposal? All right. Seeing no public comments, I'll close the public comment section of the meeting. I don't imagine staff has any rebuttal comments.
Do not.
And applicant, I imagine, not either. So the item will come back to us for consideration of the board. We need a motion and a second before discussing.
I make a motion, we accept application 22-90.
Second it.
Do we have any board discussion on the item?
And, and just before you do that, I would also ask the board to receive for the record of this proceeding, staff's file on this project.
Any board discussion of the item?
Thank you. I mean, we see the, the staff recommendations. Ally, do you mind going over those?
Again, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2022-44, subject to four conditions. One, site construction plans shall be consistent with the approved site plan. All requisite fees attended to the project shall be paid in accordance with the Land Development Code. Two, details for all site lighting, including product sheets showing shielded fixtures, shall be provided with the building permit application, showing compliance with the Land Development Code, Section 127.06. Three, developer must comply with the Public Art Program requirements of Land Development Code, Section 296, if the aggregate job value equal to or exceeds $1 million. And four, the site plan shall expire at one year from the effective date unless an application had been filed for a building permit with construction plans signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed in the state of Florida.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
The only thing I would ask is that the maker of the motion and the second clarify that that's a recommendation for approval with the four or without the four conditions that were requested by staff.
Okay. Do I just revise the motion to say that, or?
You can just say that your motion was intended to be with the four, with the four conditions.
My motion was intended to be with the recommendations of staff and the, and their conditions.
And the, does the second concur with that?
I concur.
All right, thank you.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Frences?
Yes.
Mr. Zimbellas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuliannis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item six on our agenda, application 22-87. It's site plan approval for Cohatch Tarpon Springs for restaurant and offices located at 121 East Tarpon Avenue. Do we have a staff presentation, please?
Yes.
Before, before staff starts on this particular one, this is the one that they had seen before, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So before staff moves forward on this particular one, what I am going to ask is because you did already see a good deal of this presentation, so I do, do want it noted for the record that this had been before you, before at your previous meeting, right? And that I also wanted to inquire of all the board members whether or not you can hear tonight's presentation and duly consider all the testimony and evidence that's going to be presented to you, both by staff and by the applicant, even though some of it you may have already heard. So is there anybody who cannot move forward on this based on that? Okay, the record will reflect that there are, nobody is indicating that they will have a problem making a fair decision on tonight's application. And then because it is a rehearing, I would like to see a motion of the board to go ahead and hear this again.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we'd like to continue and hear this application a second time.
Second.
Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Frences?
Yes.
Mr. Zimbellas?
Yes.
Mr. Kuliannis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, can we have the staff presentation, please?
Okay, thank you. Pat McNeese, Principal Planner. This is the Cohatch Tarpon Springs application. You saw this at your regular meeting. Most of you did on October 17th, and this is back before you now. At that meeting, you did not have the benefit, the applicant's architect was here, but you didn't have the applicant and the benefit of a full presentation from them. And staff has also done additional research to provide you with more information on parking downtown and some of the other issues you mentioned. If you've had a chance to look at your staff report, the updates are in bright, bold, red font in that staff report, updating it from what you had at your last meeting. So I'll just quickly go over the basics of the project. This is downtown Tarpon Springs on Tarpon Avenue. It's a, an existing building that we'll see in a minute. The proposal is to put an addition on that building and to provide a restaurant, outdoor bar, and an office and co-working space on the second floor mostly of that building. This is in the Tarpon Avenue, Main Street transect, T5B in the downtown character district, and of course, in the Community Redevelopment District Future Land Use area. This is the location of the project between Alt. 19 and North Safford. And again, this is in the downtown character district. The red dashed outline is the T5B transect that it's in, which covers basically that strip of Tarpon Avenue from Ring Avenue over past Alt. 19. Oops, and this is a closer view of the transect, showing what's covered and where the site is. Again, this is an adaptive reuse of an existing, your oldest commercial building in Tarpon, and this, this is a project that will preserve and update and adapt that, that project to, building to a new use. This is the existing survey, the building here, right up on Tarpon Avenue, that is your lot line, and in the back, which is mostly paved or concrete. And then the rear of the property borders on the alley behind it. And then this is just to overlay the site plan again, two-story brick building here, two-story addition, which doubles the size of that built property, and then the outdoor bar on the lower floor and open area in the back that exposes, basically exposes the project out to the alley. These are some of the elevations. This project has been to the Heritage Preservation Board, has been approved. It also received variance from the Board of Adjustment for floor area because we had a conflict in our SMART code versus our special area plan. We had them look at the floor area. There is one difference in this elevation from what the Heritage Board approved. That would be this dumpster, sorry, trash enclosure here should look like this, be behind the stairway. The applicant has already submitted building permit application and is already addressing that item, but we do have it as a recommended condition of approval. These are just renderings of that rear elevation. Again, the look, the materials, everything's been reviewed and approved by the Heritage Board. This is the front. The applicant is obviously maintaining the look and everything on the historic building. In fact, they're restoring some semblance of the transom windows, which have been gone, putting a commercial awning, so they're, they're gonna re-expose that, that strip, that concrete strip along there, so it should improve the look of the building. And these are additional renderings on that. This is the floor, planned first floor and second floor, mostly restaurant on the first floor. Second floor will be the offices and co-working space, and I'll let the applicant elaborate on how that, that works. Just to get into some of the questions we had for access and parking. The alley is, is there, but it's very limited. It's only seven and a half feet wide in portions at the two ends. It's used locally for business owner traffic to access behind their stores, but it's not regularly traversed by vehicles. It's not big enough for delivery trucks, garbage trucks, that sort of thing. The city is working on activating this alley as a pedestrian alley. It's already, I believe, being lit up, so we have some additional work I think we're gonna be doing on that alley. We do have our Economic Development Manager here if you have questions about how that, that is gonna be working. This project is exempt from parking because it is in that T5B transect district downtown. The exemption, and this is the exact wording here, is for any project in that transect as long as there's available parking within a five-minute walking distance downtown. This is the only transect that's exempt from parking right now in your SMART code. Some of the reasons for this, basically, as, as you know, most of, I mean, that development that exists there pretty much was the pattern prior to the automobile, so the sites are pretty full with building structures, and there just isn't sufficient room for applicants to provide onsite parking. Parking downtown, you know, as far as surface parking lots, the city's kind of stayed away from that. There's not much room down there, but it does, the desire with SMART code was to preserve the walkability, and surface parking lots tend to disrupt that kind of feel for downtowns. Also, we want to encourage the adaptive reuse of these buildings, and that was part of the thinking behind it. So in the meantime, with that exemption, the city separately continues to work on additional parking. Again, here's the transect. Again, that's the only one the exemption applies to. This is a quarter-mile walk shed, so it's about a five-minute walk shed around the site, and we'll talk about these different parking areas. This is a little bit zoomed in a little closer. So the yellow are city-owned and leased lots. The total right now, 290 spaces. The orange, we have verbal agreements for after-hours parking. Those are the banks, basically. So that amounts to 79 spaces. And then the purple and green are areas where there is potential for parking, and the city's identified those areas to start to, to keep working on expanding the downtown parking. We also have on-street parking. You all would be familiar with some of the recent upgrades on Court Street, behind the cultural center in those areas. That amounts to about 230 spaces, and this is in less than a five-minute walking distance in this count. So we did some ransom numbers, found that we have about 194,000 square feet of existing floor area in that transect. That's gross floor area. So the, so if parking were required, we've got the maximum number here that would be required at three per thousand square feet that is required elsewhere in your code. With a shared parking factor, which lets you combine restaurant, office, or retail, office, different uses like that, it drops to 486. Right now, we have 590 spaces we know are available in less than that five-minute walk, or if you, don't count the verbal agreement spaces, 511 spaces are available. So we do have a, basically, a surplus of parking that is available downtown for this And this just talks a little bit about how this was calculated. The applicant is proposing 6,750 new square feet of floor area, so we feel like they should be okay, but again, the city continues to work on this, so it's really, I mean, everything in that strip between Alt. 19 and Safford is developed, with the exception, I would say, if the city-owned CRA lot downtown next to Acropolis Meats, that's the only vacant piece, but, so they would all have to look at those kinds of, of numbers and, and requirements if any of those buildings were gonna be redeveloped to something else. There was a concern about stormwater. I did add to your staff report the actual requirement that exempts them from stormwater. Basically, it's our stormwater retrofit section. The applicant is reducing the impervious surface from .85 to .83. But they did work with city staff to try to alleviate and maybe improve a little bit the condition along the alley. So when we have heavy rains, and really downtown is pretty high, not a huge flooding problem or ponding problem right in, in, on that strip of downtown. But we do, our stormwater, streets and stormwater staff was a little bit concerned about the alley and trying to alleviate the rush of water down that alley and any erosion. So the applicant, and they can probably explain this a little better, came up in conjunction with our staff with, with a mini-vault type system in the back there behind the bar and a bubbler to try to calm the, the release of that water as it exits and is sent down the alley to our system to the east. So that's what this, I just tried to do a close-up showing you the bubbler and the layout. That one of your conditions is that they will provide more detail, construction-level drawing detail at building permit stage. So as I said, they've received variance for floor area and HPB approval. The project is compliant with the Land Development Code and with the SMART code. It is compliant with the comprehensive plan, and it meets the concurrency management system, and we expect it to be able to comply with all city building codes. So we have six conditions that we would like an approval to include. As I said, the applicant is addressing the first one now, but we'd still like that on here to have it, have it be clear. The first and second one, they're addressing public... The first and second one, they're addressing public art. The applicant has already contacted me to set up a meeting with the Public Art Committee, so hopefully they'll be working on that. And like I say, they've already applied for a building permit, so that's been done. So we would recommend approval, subject to those conditions. And when it's appropriate, I would like to tender my staff report presentation and full record as evidence. Are there any questions, please?
Do any board members have questions for staff?
I guess I'll start off again. The, when was this parking study done?
The parking--
This parking, those statistics, is that a, do you, is that constituted as a study?
Well, we just compiled those, and I'll let Karen and Renee talk to you about them.
We wanted to be able to provide additional information to flesh out the parking. The reason for the exemption, those numbers are recent. We literally collected those since we've had this hearing, identified, you know, the number of spaces. We collected through the property appraisal records, all the building square footages in that district, so that we could give you, you know, an analysis of the parking situation and show that this meets the requirement, you know, meets that exemption requirement.
Right.
And just for the record, please make sure your name and position with the city.
Oh, I'm sorry. Renee Vincent, I'm Planning and Zoning Director.
So, you know, you and I met a week or so ago, and we talked about this project. And that the, and we talked about actually a parking study that needs to be done, but in a broader sense of, you know--
Sure, there may be other areas that we might want to look at something like this.
Yeah, where we are in, where we are in the big picture of parking in the downtown. The issue wasn't, the issue that was brought up at the prior time this was brought to us, wasn't necessarily parking availability. It was more the compatibility with the downtown and the pattern of parking. So it wasn't that we understand, I think, I can't speak for them, I understand that parking is not a requirement of downtown, because everybody has zero lot lines, nobody could provide parking. I understand that. But the thing where you and I kind of maybe had a slight disagreement on, or was whether or not parking can be a compatibility issue, which then goes to, you know, the comprehensive plan on compatibility. So the question, and I think you and I actually had a very productive conversation about that, that that was more the concern, was that, and I think when the applicant gets up and can answer some of the questions that weren't able to be answered by their representative the last time, was the kind of the pattern of the tenants or members, however, you know, their, as to whether they're, you know, it's a big difference if all, you know, there's 30 or 40 parked cars there all day long in the downtown. Now, I think we had a, obviously, a good conversation about how we could address that at a future time, if in fact that became an issue. But that was really our thing. So we were never having an issue about whether there was ample parking in the downtown area. It was more the pattern. And again, when the applicant comes up, we can address some of that with them as well.
And we wanted to make sure, because when you read the way that the exemption reads, it says where it can be demonstrated that available parking is within a five-minute walk, public parking. And so we felt like we needed to provide additional information to show, here's what the parking need is, where this exemption exists. Here's the parking that's available, and it will support that available parking, would then support that additional square footage.
Yeah, but I just want you to understand, our issue wasn't, I don't, my issue, I can't speak for anybody else, was not availability of parking, but the base, I don't, the pattern of parking as a compatibility issue. So just, I just want to be clear. And you and I had that conversation.
Yeah, we did.
And I enjoyed that conversation very much.
I do have a question, just to clarify the record. When you met with Renee, were you meeting on this application specifically, or were you meeting generally regarding the parking requirements for the downtown area as they exist in the code?
Parking.
Okay. I was just trying to clear up for the record, so that it's clear you didn't specifically meet with her on this application prior to tonight, correct?
I met with her to answer questions about parking.
Just generally, as it appears in the code?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further board questions of staff?
I have a question. Ms. McNeese, thank you so much for adding more detail in regards to the parking. And I'm going to politely disagree with my board member. My concern was specifically about availability of parking and not pattern, because I sense that there is not availability. So I'd like to drill into something, and I'll just want to use a real-world example of availability. If I may be, draw our attention to parking spaces behind Flagship Bank, 31 and 37. That's not how they're labeled, that's how many are available there. And this is where I need a little bit of help, understanding our, we'll say, ad hoc parking analysis. So those that are done in yellow, terrific. And I'll take a moment to go, anything that's verbally agreed, if I can be so bold, is useless. They're verbal agreements, so they don't mean a thing. But those ones in yellow, and this is the only one that I'm really, really familiar with, is that behind Flagship Bank, there's a big old parking lot. There was a bunch of roadwork done about a year, two years ago. And why I bring this to our attention is that, for a while, the bank put up signs and told everybody that was going to little shops right on the north side that they were going to tow us, them. And so this huge parking lot sat vacant for years, and no one could park there. Now, I know that's changed, forgive me, but this is, there's a point to this. So it's now, we rebuilt the road, and now there's parking there, but this big yellow square that is shown here with these spaces isn't really accurate, because most of that goes to the bank and the building there that have "we're going to tow you" signs. Now, I know you've got the space requirement there, so you're, and I know the numbers are there, so those are the spaces that are actually available 24/7. Nobody's going to get towed if they go park there.
To my knowledge, yeah.
Good. But I'm going to politely disagree. I think there's something not, that doesn't add up there, because--
Yeah, Ms. Lemmons may be able to answer that, she's very familiar with--
Okay, sure, because this, I just want to use this as a magnifying glass, as these big yellow squares that actually have little to no parking available at them. Please, go ahead.
Yes, we have lease agreements with the owners of those lots. The reason that they're shown in two, because there are two separate owners that own the lots behind there. But yes, those are the actual parking spaces that have been identified in the municipal lease with the owners and the city. So those spaces are available for public parking. We have the public parking signs posted there as well.
And Nate, your full name and position with the city.
I'm sorry, Karen Lemmons, Economic Development Manager.
Hi, Karen, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. And I appreciate that input, and I think, no one has to acknowledge, but what I said was true, is that for the longest time, that big parking lot sat empty. And now we're relying on it to feed or provide parking for this new business. And then this is only hearsay, but we all know that all those other parking lots are full 24/7. It just is what it is, and we don't need to deny that. And I know that your numbers say different, but golly gee, I'm going to just point out, the one that's right adjacent to the proposed applicant, number seven, yep, it has seven places, and I've been looking at it for months, and I can't find one parking spot ever. And I live here in that. So that's the end of my questions, other than I want to repeat that my concern is availability of parking, because I just have this instinct, even though you did a great calculation on numbers, that in reality, there's not any available parking right now. And with that, I'll just end.
Any further board questions for staff?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Mr. Vessi, and I was, I do appreciate that the staff added this to the presentation, but I'm sorry, 590 spaces, I'm not buying that. So, I mean, the biggest issue that we had before, and it's still the same issue today, is it's definitely availability. And because it's not a requirement, doesn't mean it's not a reality, and especially to the people that live here. So we know that these spaces are not available 24/7. We had a festival recently in town, and I assume that's how these numbers were calculated, because you see that they're going down the streets here, showing that you can park on these streets. Well, when you park on these streets, you make them one-way streets. And during any type of busy hour, you just jam traffic up. So during this festival that was down at Craig Park, there was no parking that was provided, so all the people that attended just parked all along Spring Boulevard. And that essentially just became a one-way road, with nobody directing traffic either way. So there's going to be no way to regulate this. Sure, there's 590 spots available. You're talking about if we had a, it would be literally like a festival in town every single day. So those spaces are there, but it's not reasonable. And the town just, they're not available in any reasonable sort of way. So while I appreciate the updated numbers, I'm just, they're just not believable. And I did want to add about the verbal agreement. I don't understand who's made these verbal agreements. I don't know anybody in town who would just say, yeah, the city can use my parking whenever. So I'd like to have some explanation on who these verbal agreements are with, with the city.
Yeah, again, when we've been looking at parking for several years, we all know as the downtown is growing and getting more active, more businesses, that parking is an issue. But without going into all of that, we, when we started leasing, the designating and looking at areas that we could lease, parking lots, they were designated on that. At the same time, we talked to the banks, Truist Bank and Wells Fargo. We, they are good city partners to us, especially during festivals. So we had talked with them about entering into agreements with them. For liability reasons, they weren't going to, they're privately owned, they're corporations. However, they told us that they, they're good community partners, they're not going to tow anybody. The parking lots are open to people who can use them during the evenings. When we have festivals, our sanitation crew comes out and makes sure that they clean them up. So the verbal agreement means that as a city partner, as a downtown business that has parking lots, they are not going to be towing anybody out of those lots. And those was in discussions with the two bank managers, and we appreciate that.
I do have one more question, but I don't want to get in front of anybody else. A thought experiment, if this cohatch was outside this transect, and the intensity of business that it's suggesting, what would its parking requirements be if it was outside the cohatch and just standalone in any other business district? How many parking places would be required? I know that's a tough question, but I think you know--
It's not that tough. Okay. So the total square footage of gross floor area, and this would be conservative, because they're only required to supply parking for net floor area.
And that would take into account the beer and wine and restaurant usage?
Yeah, so gross floor areas, things that don't include stairwells, hallways, things like that, storage areas. So it would be about 39 spaces for the existing and the new building, without the shared parking factor. Actually, 32 spaces with the shared parking factor, which they'd be able to use for this building.
Thank you.
So if you were going to require parking for the existing, which had a use in it, was using the downtown, was parking in the downtown, it would be 32. I can give you the number for just the new floor area, if you'd like. So for the new floor area, you'd be looking at 20 spaces, or 16 spaces with shared parking.
That is really impressive, and I think we should take a moment and thank ourselves that we have Patricia McNeese on our staff. I felt like I was watching--
Well, it's three per thousand square feet.
I was watching Tom Hanks in All the Right Stuff when he did that, right? Thank you, that's very good. But I think that that helps. I think it was a good question in that, so more or less, they're going to use, they could use 40 parking places, and yes, we've got a nice graph, and I'll end my conversation.
Any further board questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple. Oh, I'm sorry, Robert, go ahead.
If I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the site plan and the trash receptacle, or storage bin, or whatever you want it designated as, and this may be a good question for the staff, or it may be something you wish to be directed to the applicant, so I'll defer to your judgment on that. That alleyway back there, being that it's, the width is prohibited to any sort of vehicular entry, and a bar and restaurant use proposed, how is this trash going to transport itself off that site and into an accessible area for prompt and efficient garbage removal?
Yes, there, and we go through facilities impacts on pages three and four of your staff report. There is a shared dumpster right in the back of that Orange Street parking lot, right across the, well, catty corner across the alley. The applicant, actually, the existing building in use was already paying into that shared dumpster. That payment fee will be recalculated for this new use. This applicant will be using that shared dumpster. At the same time, Public Works let me know they're going to be upgrading that dumpster with a compactor as well. And that's what, these owners along this north side of Tarpon either move totes out to Hibiscus, depending on how much they generate, or they use that shared dumpster along with the Tarpon Tavern and those, a couple of the others, so.
Thank you.
And you have a follow-up. Pat, can you put those statistics, those parking statistics you had up there?
Okay, so your available downtown spaces, does it include those items in red that were privately owned, available, and used for public? Does it include those?
The orange, you mean?
Yeah, the orange, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so this number, 590, includes those. This 511 number does not include those. That would be calculations with--
All right, oh yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. So, yeah, the, these, I mean, without a true study, which I think the city should spend the money and do, which would have, you know, not, not just, this is helpful, but--
Right.
But a real study that had times and-- a real study that had times and, and, you know, capacity at times and all those kinds of things, short of having that, all of us are talking anecdotal, right? When we say, "Well, I think there's a parking problem," there's not a parking problem. I anecdotally have never had a problem finding a place to park, but that's me, okay? But, these, these orange spaces, let's say Truist Bank, for example, it doesn't have signage that says "available to the public," right?
I don't think so.
No, they do not. Neither bank has any signage that says "available to the public."
Okay, so, people would, most likely, I would choose, if I was going to go park down there, I wouldn't choose to park in one of those spots, because I wouldn't, I would assume that's, you know, private parking lot, and I might get towed away or something. So, but I understand, how, so Karen, how can we, without having any of their liability issues, how can we encourage people to park there? Or even give them the understanding that they have permission to park there? Because right now, you just take a shot that you could park there and not going to get towed away.
Well, I think it's, it's, it's a known quantity for events downtown, that after hours, you can park there, because everybody-
If I come in from out of town, how do I know? And I, I mean, I live here and I'm pretty active, and I don't know. I don't know that. I didn't know it until you, until you gave me this thing. So, it's not a very known quantity of-
Sure, we can always follow up with them for some signage that might say "festival parking," something like that, that can be put up during events, that we could say, you know, after hours, parking available.
So, I think we need, if we're going to, if we're going to use those as parking to help whatever this, I'll use air quotes, "problem," parking problem we have, then we should figure out a way to direct people that they can do that.
Yeah, and we can follow up with them for-
Without the known quantities, I don't know anything. But that's just me, I, yeah. So, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just, whatever.
And staff can certainly depend, you know, when you act on this, we can certainly add something to the board's presentation, expressing your all's concern with downtown parking in general.
Yeah.
And, you know, your desire, I know since I've been here, they've talked about parking garages, I think they've talked about parking studies, but I think, I think they're aware of it.
I mean, we shouldn't go-
But we could certainly express that that's a city action that should take place.
Right, but before we spend whatever millions of dollars on a parking garage, we need to have a parking study. And I know that's not your thing, I mean, that's something that needs to be budgeted by the Board of Commissioners and, and, you know, hire the, you know, outside parking analysis people that do such things. So, I understand, it's not, and again, it's not your fault. Thank you, that's it.
I have one more question. Surprised when you thought you were out of the woods. Pat, would it be fair, excuse me, staff, would it be fair that every parcel and every business within the downtown special transect district four?
T5B.
Is that right?
Close enough.
Would be allowed to have the same intensity as this project, and therefore, let's run a rough number of 10, add a demand of an additional 400 parking spaces, without us ever adding a parking lot? Based on the data that we got right now?
I'm not sure what you mean, they all have uses now.
Okay, so, so-
So, you'd have to figure out what new uses generate a higher number. And in transect code, most of what you'll get on that strip is 3 per thousand square feet. That's office, that's restaurant, that's retail. Something that's different would be industrial, which you're not going to have down here, so.
Okay, so, let me clarify, I didn't mean to set you up, because I was vague. So, this particular parcel has, and I love to say this, the oldest building in Tarpon Springs. I think that's neat. And right now, half of it's built and half of it looks like trees. But they're going to expand it to twice the size and add an intensity that, based on your calculations, has a minimum of a need of 32 parking spaces, of which we have none for that lot. And then I can quickly just look across to the left and to the right, to the north and the south, and sure, they're not necessarily two stories, but each one of those probably has the same property rights as the applicant, which means that they could ask for a demand of 30 parking places. And I can go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. So, it's fair, perhaps, tell me if I'm wrong, that if each one of those asked to be a cohatch, we would probably be required to approve them as a cohatch and add a demand of an additional 300 parking spaces. Would that be a fair conjecture?
Again, unless, you know, they're all occupied by a use now, that requires 3 per thousand.
I'm just looking at worst-case scenario, we got this no parking transect.
So, most of the buildings there really do not have, unless they're going to go vertical. This one's unique in that really only half of the building, half of the lot is built on. So, yes, you do have, you have the availability to go to the rear on this with a similar two-story.
Super, and forgive me, and thank you for coming up. Right across the street is an empty lot that we've been advertising development for years. They could put a two-story cohatch there and have 60 little cubicles and have a demand for 60 parking places. Would that be fair?
If it's the same, I think, no, our total parking demand was only 32 with the expansion. So, the addition itself was approximately half of that is from the addition, so.
But we could, and thank you, forgive me for interrupting.
No, it's okay.
But in the lot that is empty right now?
Yes, it would be predicated on-
It's reasonable that someone could build something that has a parking demand of more than 30 parking places?
Well, I mean, I think it would, we would have to look at it just like we're looking at this one, so.
But they have a parking exemption?
They, they, we would have to do the same analysis, that, you know, it says, "You're exempt as long as you can show that there's available parking." So, within the five-minute walk shed. So, that's what we've, you know, tried to provide, the actual public parking that's available. Does that mean it's available 24 hours a day? No. I mean, that's, I mean, go to the mall, it doesn't work that way. So, you know, what we're showing is that, based on the actual parking requirement, if you aggregated up all the buildings right now in that transect where parking is exempt, there is, there is parking available to meet what, basically at a 3 per thousand, and then concerning the shared parking factor, which is allowed in land development, or the SMART code, to meet that requirement, with some buffer left over, which is then accommodating this 6,700 square foot expansion. So, we would have to relook at that again, if the city lot comes to fruition, as to, okay, what do the numbers show now? We may have acquired more parking by that time. So, it's a dynamic process, it's not static, I guess is my point. Did that help?
I think it did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think you have another question down there, and actually, I have a question as well, when you're finished.
Yeah, I heard, I heard earlier, when you were talking about shared parking, I think it was the young lady besides you, I forget your name, forgive me, but I had heard shared parking for special events, and that concerns me. Is it just for special events that we intended those shared parkings to accommodate?
Shared parking refers to the different uses. So, you can, you can, it's a factor that reduces the number, based on somebody's going to the, that's working up in the office, is going to go downstairs and eat in a restaurant, that's what, instead of, so you kind of combine them and it reduces.
No, I understand that.
The special events is, is what, Karen, it doesn't relate to shared-
Are you talking about the, the bank lots, the lots that are in orange?
And you used the word, you said shared parking, but you said for use of special events.
It's for after-hours, so if it's a special event or not-
During the daytime?
After-hours, they don't tow, they're not, they won't tow cars after-hours.
Those areas, those shared parking lots, are they able to be used during working hours? By non-bank?
I want to make sure we got the question clear. So, we have leased lots. So, leased lots are available 24/7. The ones by verbal agreement, I think is more what she was discussing with, we won't tow, and especially during special events, but those, and that's why we didn't count them in the second set of calculations.
But the leased parking lots are there for use, not just for special events?
Yes.
For any activity?
Yes, all those orange, all those yellow lots, those are either city-owned or we lease them, and those are available 24/7 for municipal parking, correct?
Thank you.
Our attorney had a comment?
If you want to let the board members go first, go ahead.
Okay, so, let's have a timeout here. Okay, so, this, Karen, you can come back if you want. Wait a minute, so, we're talking about a business that's going to function during the day, right? And now, you guys are bringing up these oranges that you're saying are for special events at night. How is that relevant to what this applicant?
Yeah, the map was put together for various purposes. So, for tonight, what we wanted to do is to show you that there are parking available and where these lots are. So, we coded them as yellow, those are the ones that can be used, that-
Please, I get you, I get you, but the fact that, we are talking about a business that's going to be here during the day, most likely a working week activity, right? And you are showing us and promoting parking that's not available for them, unless we're wrong, but the way you answered the question for Mr. Zambellis-
I believe they're having a restaurant there as well.
You said available for special events and weekends and evenings. That, what relevance does that have to do with this applicant?
I believe they have a restaurant as well, so the restaurant could be open after 5.
But not the 30 offices that are upstairs, that are going to be the, probably the bulk of the parking? I mean, again, we haven't heard from the applicant.
Yeah, I think the applicant can tell us what the hours are if it's co-working spaces, they could be, you know, doing things during the day and also at night, but they can address those hours.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zambellis.
Any further board members want to comment, or ask a question of staff?
I wanted just to add that by adding these, and you did mark them as potential, which I agree is misleading, as soon as these are seen as available during the day, say Truist, very quickly, Truist Bank will not allow the city to use any of that parking once people start using it to park for cohatch. That verbal agreement will disappear immediately. And then, everybody else in the city that tries to use it for nighttime events, like to go to Johnny's across the street, now that, that relationship is now over. So, I mean, by putting these in here, I mean, you're not, it's not helping the applicant either, because it's misleading that, that there's more potential spaces for them that really don't exist. And the people that come for these office spaces aren't going to know that. It's not, it's not really their responsibility to know that either. If it says no tow, then they'll be upset that they're towing, but Truist Bank and these other orange places, they won't have any, I mean, other, that will be their only option, because it'll start being abused. And we're not going to be able to prevent that in any way. And then the five-minute thing, I think is really stretching it. Flagship Bank is across the street from Alter 19. It's, and it's two blocks down from Tarpon Avenue in the, this, the applicant's business. So, it's incredibly hard to cross Alter 19 in five minutes, and if you're trying to go directly across the street. So, I would just, I would say that I don't even believe that that's a five-minute walk. And I think that, that yellow, the flagship bank shouldn't even be included, because it's across the street. That's it.
Any, any further questions for staff? All right, good.
All right, just a few. I'm looking at page 59 of your SMART code. And it says that the following transect zones shall be exempt from required parking where it can be demonstrated during the site plan review process, that available public or private paid parking is available within a five-minute walk. And then it lists District T5B, Tarpon Avenue, Main Street. Is that the only area under the code that's exempt from these parking requirements?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And approximately how many properties would that consist of? Do you have just a rough idea of how many properties are in there?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know, 30, something, something like that. Maybe 20 or 30, the most.
Like a round ballpark number reflecting, so it's only those areas outlined in that red, that is the only area-
That's correct.
That is the T5B where this parking exemption applies for.
That's correct.
And the age of this building, was it in existence before the current code was adopted?
Yes.
Okay. So, if it was in existence before your parking code was adopted, would it be subject to any other parking requirements if nothing else changes about the building?
No.
Okay. And, I had one more question. Does it say in what I just read, that the parking has to be dedicated parking? So, the parking, as according to the code, does not have to be dedicated, it just says "available public or private parking"?
That's correct, yes.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Approach the microphone and state your name and address.
And also indicate whether or not you've been sworn.
Thank you, my name is Angela Hendershot, I represent the architect, Row Architects on the project. I live in Temple Terrace, so I'm not a resident of Tarpon Springs.
You can use your, you can use your business address if you would like.
Okay, my business address is 200 Madison Avenue, Tampa, Florida. And, I'm, sorry, Pat did a great job kind of going through the process. She's highlighted everything in red, really architecturally and site plan-wise. There aren't any changes based on what you saw last time, there's clarifications that she's, she's noted in red. So, I'm simply available to answer any questions. We do specialize in historic preservation projects and adaptive reuse of historic buildings. So, we're very honored to be working on this, the oldest building in, in the, in the city. But, really, I know what you want to hear from is, is from the applicant themselves, so I'm going to turn it over to Chris from Cohatch. And yes, I have been sworn, sorry, I forgot that part at the beginning.
Yes, I have been sworn, my name's Chris Watkins, 1825 Upper Chelsea, Columbus, Ohio, The down? Thank you for everyone taking the time. I know we've already been through a lot of conversation here, so I'll try to go very quickly, try to hit some highlights, and then open up for questions, because I know that's probably what you all would like to do. We are very interested in this project. The reason Cohatch exists is really to do projects like this, we're doing adaptive reuse within historical walkable communities across the country, primarily in the Midwest and the Southeast. We came down to Tampa because we have a lot of friends and family that are interested in Cohatch being down here. We came down here two and a half years ago to begin our site locations, and we came upon this location. We're very, very excited about the opportunity to be able to bring some life back to it. This is our project team, which you have, I think, in this file. Brian Sanders, who's our Tampa market leader, he's unfortunately out of the country, he wasn't one to be here tonight, but he had already had a pre-planned trip before that. But he is a Tampa Bay resident, he actually runs the market for us. Noel Cruz, who's one of, one of the great restaurateurs in the community and the Tampa Bay region, he's the one that's going to be running the Made Hole, which will be the restaurant that will be cohabitating the space with Cohatch. Really, what Cohatch really seeks to do is, we're looking at not traditional coworking the way you might have seen it before. We really look at all three aspects of your life, your work life, your meeting life, and your live life. So, this isn't just about coming to work from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. This space is really meant to be an extension of your home, to be able to use in a much different way. So, as far as it relates to the, the traffic flow and the things, I think we're- So, as far as it relates to the, the traffic flow and the things that I think were really important to everybody here, is you're not going to walk into one of our locations and have two hundred people sitting in one of those space, in the, in the location at any given time. It's going to be, you walk in, there could be ten people, there could be fifteen people, there could be twenty people. People are mostly small business owners, medium-sized business owners, startups, so they're in and out of the space, they're not there, it's rare that you have somebody there that's from, you know, eight in the morning until ten o'clock at night, it just is very unusual to have that. They're coming in at different hours, it's very spread out, so all, almost all of our locations are in these walkable main streets that have the exact same issues that you do. We really work hard to work with the city and the community to make sure that we're, they understand our business flow is not this kind of all-at-once heavy business flow that creates stress on the parking within a community. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to be going into all the communities we go into. Because our traffic flow is usually very disparate, it's, it's revolving, it's not all hit at once, it really doesn't create extra stress in a community in all the different locations we've, we've been in. Really, what is really unique about Cohatch is, we're not just looking to do the adaptive reuse for the sake of doing adaptive reuse, we're really looking at the community, what the needs of the city are, what the needs of the nonprofits in the community are, what the needs of the businesses are in the community, and what the city needs, and what they're looking for to really revitalize that incredible history of that building. Our team spent weeks and weeks and weeks and months and months in design to understand the history of this space, understanding the, the character of it, understanding all the different nuances of Tarpon Springs, have incorporated that into the design, which you'll get to see a little bit here, but if, once, once we ever were to get open, you'd be able to really see the appreciation for understanding what the history here in this community and that particular building. One thing that we do that is very unique is, we have three different types of scholarship, a give scholarship, a boost scholarship, and a civic scholarship. Civic scholarships are for city staff, fire departments, police departments, people that don't really have access to this kind of space, we actually allow them to use these spaces for free. We do the same for startups, for people that don't have access to capital, maybe can't afford to, you know, belong to one of our locations, we also grant them in for free. And then our give scholarship is for nonprofits that are doing good in your community, that usually don't have a place to go to work, they usually don't have a place to do their board meetings, they don't have a place to do a fundraiser, you know, things like that, we provide that type of space to them for free. So, our commercial business model is the for-profit people create the ability for us to then serve the community in, in a broader sense. The partnerships we have in the community, and as I mentioned, Made Hole will be, is a local operator that will be providing the food and beverage concept at Cohatch. These are just some examples of some of the adaptive reuse that we've done, most, a lot of these buildings are going into, the oldest one we've done is a hundred and sixty years old, that we've repurposed and brought back to life. This is one in Springfield, Ohio, this one is also, that was our first location, Cincinnati, Ohio, almost identical space as here, it's three stories, although yours, although the Tarpon one is two, but very walkable community, zero parking on the main street, zero municipal parking, nowhere near the parking that we saw today, we've had no stress on the community as a result of our use. This is Lakeland, which just opened up, right on Main Street, right on the park, in, in downtown Lakeland, we opened about two weeks ago, they have similar, again, issues, mostly street parking, very few municipal lots around, we're not creating any stress in that environment, and if you ever had a chance to get over to see what our, our product looks like, this was, again, originally the post office of Lakeland, a hundred-plus years ago, nineteen oh-two is when the building was built, and we brought this back to life, and it's really serving the community well already. Downtown St. Pete, another historical repurposing of an old hotel. And then in West Tampa, this is a community that, the, the multiple blocks of just basically abandoned buildings that we're going in and repurposing with several other partners to bring this whole block back to life, and we're very excited about this project as well. Our vision for Tarpon is really to continue to build out the, the sites within the region to be able to serve the different members across the region, really connecting to the community, as I mentioned, our design team and our construction team really spent a tremendous amount of time understanding the history of the building, understand the history of the community to be able to incorporate that into our design. These are some of the different amenities that will be available, the meeting rooms, we have game rooms for people so their kids can come to our spaces, we've got kitchenettes and kind of a, a place for to gather, these are really more like a town hall two-point-oh, this is not a traditional coworking, which is why we would never say that we're going to come in and, and bring something that doesn't add value to the community, this is really about adding value to your community, so that we can hopefully help you all be able to work, meet, and live in a better way. You've already seen the site plans, so I won't review any of these things, I think just one quick understanding, because I think this is to the parking and some of the use questions, the, the left and the right side, so the left side is, is the food, the right side is part of the Cohatch, and we have a shared space that sits in between, so during the day it's used more for Cohatch, more for kind of meetings, and then at night it can be a little bit of overflow for seating for the restaurant. This, I think the restaurant's total about thirty, five-hundred square feet, so it's not very big, so we try to, again, get maximum use out of the space, so that our, both our members and the everyday customers at Made Hole will be able to have a great experience. And the second floor is, is mostly private office. You can see, most of these are singles, so it's one person, you walk in any of our locations, any of the given offices, maybe half are being used during, at any given time, it's just not a business model, everyone, the whole purpose of being a small business owner is you don't have to go to someplace eight to five every day, and that's the beauty of our model, particularly in a post-COVID world. As you all know, that this is the shape of the building today, and this, that street. These are just some of the additional visuals, what we'll be creating there. So, I'll open up for any questions, I think, if, at this point.
I have a couple.
Sure.
The private offices, could you just enlighten a little bit more, is it a, you said one-person offices, are, do you, is the plan where you, your membership is, by the, your membership, then you can use it by the hour, use it by the day, you, are you running it by the month, by the year?
Yeah, so the private offices, think of like an apartment, people are going to use a, that's their, theirs, it's got a lock on it, no one else can use it, so it's only their space, so, there's one up to four-person private offices, most of the offices, people, like a four-person is probably two people using it, it's just the really way we price it, based on the size of it. And then there's coworking members, which would be somebody that does not have a office, but can just use all the open area, can use the meeting rooms, can use the, the, you know, larger kind of meeting event space, so they have access to that in all of our locations around the city, so it's not just this location they can be a member of, they can be a member of any location.
So, if you have the option of a lease option, where you're going to lease it for the year, how many offices are going to be set up to be that way? Where you're leasing it to an individual, a company, and that person comes to that office five, six, seven days of the week?
Yeah, they're all one-to-two-year memberships for the most part, you can do month-to-month, but almost, probably ninety-seven percent of ours are, people want to lock it up, because they know there's only a few of them, so they don't get access to that many of them. And so, those are generally for that, and they, maybe twenty, thirty percent will turn over on a, a given year, so you'll have new people come in and take over those offices, someone maybe gets too big, they need to grow out of it, but that's generally how the, the offices work, and it's, eighty percent of our members are small business owners.
My last question, with the other locations, do you keep flow statistics as to what the flow is like during, with these, with those locations?
Yeah, I mean, we've been in business for six years, it's our seventh year in business, you will look Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you can almost not predict exactly what's going to happen on any given day, so, but what I can say is, I, I've been working out of one myself for four years, and you'll, I don't think I've ever had more than twenty, thirty people at one time in our building, ours is thirteen-thousand square feet, it's almost the exact same size as this, it's in a walkable, you know, community as well, it just, because people will leave, they'll come in for two hours, they'll leave, and other people, so maybe over the course of a day, you may have fifty, sixty, seventy different people in and out, but it's, it's never like everybody there at once, and that's six years of history of doing it. Again, I think it's because that's the nature of the work style for most people, is they're just not sitting there all day long.
Thank you.
Sure. Great questions.
Other questions of the applicant?
If no other board members have a question, I do have a couple of questions. Do you have some?
Yeah. But you, you want to ask yours?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, go ahead.
And, do you, any of your other buildings have parking lease agreements with neighboring properties, or off-site parking agreements with other properties?
I have one in Indianapolis, it's the only one where we have ten-site, or sorry, ten-space location, that was the only one that we've got in the group.
So, potentially, on maybe some of these areas where there's a, a verbal agreement for parking, would you be willing to approach any of those areas and make a request for a lease for additional parking and parking spaces for your property?
If they were open to it, we would. We generally, that'd be to our advantage, because then we could be able to tell our people that's the case.
Okay.
That was a great question. I like her. Hey, let me, I'm familiar with the Oxford Exchange in Tampa, I don't know if you're familiar with it. The Oxford Exchange has the, it looks similar to one, some of your other, again, I can't tell from the other pictures, it didn't have necessarily a whole bunch of small offices, it had meeting rooms, and then a much larger common space with tables for people to bring their laptops and sit down and, and work.
Yes.
I think what, you know, what concerned, I, again, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, what concerned me when we got down to this parking compatibility issue we had was the number of offices. I hear what you're saying, and I'm not disagreeing that what you're, you know, you're being forthright, but the, I, I have a hard time wrapping my, my head around the, if, if it's a single office use, and somebody has got a designated office, so you have, you've got these two arrangements, right, you have this membership kind of thing where somebody can come and hang out in the center area and, and maybe use a meeting room, and then you have actual lease agreements with individual businesses, or guys in business, you would suspect. So, why wouldn't somebody who has a single unit be there? I mean, if he's, if he's working from home, he wouldn't necessarily need a single unit, because he can't meet anybody there unless, you know, he goes, meets him in the, in the general area, then why would he want a unit? And have to pay, you know, have to be on a one- or two-year lease agreement? So, I think that's, there's so many rooms here, I mean, and maybe the architect can answer, how, how many offices are there here?
I think it's thirty or thirty-one.
Okay. So, and I think that's what concerns us with, concerns me with the, what intensity it's going to put on parking. Again, we have, and I think there's a, a business owner here that probably will get up and speak, I assume he will. So, the, you know, right now, we don't, we have mostly small, like retail, we've got, you know, coffee shop, people come, maybe, you know, maybe they would park there for an hour, walk around downtown, there's, it's not that big a downtown, they could walk around in an hour, pretty much check every shop out, and then get in a car and go home. The same thing with some guy at a coffee shop. Now, if we've got thirty potential businesses there that could show up at nine o'clock in the morning and stay till five, then it would potentially disrupt, you know, the ability of these more transient businesses to have access to parking, you know, that's more convenient, otherwise, they're, you know, somebody going to Faculous Orthopedics to go pick up some orthotics, and he's got to now walk five, you know, minute walk to come there and get his thing and then go home. I think that's, again, our compatibility issue, and you, obviously, you, you know, you, you want to be a good partner of our town and be not, you know, just come over and take over the town, you want to be a, a, a member of our community
Absolutely.
in some way, so, I think that's where we have to kind of get our, get our, our head around this whole concept, and, and that's what concerned me when I saw so many rooms, and no offense to the person you sent the last time here, but they couldn't even, they didn't even have an answer to how many rooms, my colleague over here had to actually add them up to tell us what was there, so, I think that's this, kind of the concerning part.
Well, I think one of the questions you asked, sorry, Chris, is, why wouldn't someone be there nine to five? I mean, I think that's, obviously, it's totally business-dependent, and I can only speak as far as myself in a, in a, in a design business and in architecture, I'm out of my office, I would say, at least forty to fifty percent of the time, I'm, I'm meeting with clients, I'm meeting with engineers, I'm on the job site, I'm visiting buildings, I'm, I'm taking field measurements, and, and that's, you know, a, a long-established fifty-year-plus company, and, and so, I would say, the more entrepreneurial a business, the more likely they are to be out and about in, in the community, but, but that's, that's something, I, I don't have data to back up.
Yeah, I mean, like, again, we have six years of operating history, the nature of our clients, because you have everything from marketing people to insurance, salespeople to realtors, to small tech startups, you have some larger companies now have given stipends to their people, they can work wherever they want, so you got that going on, so, but people still like to have that work flexibility, that is the purpose of Cohatch, it gives you that flexibility with your work-life, your meeting life, and your personal life, because people can use this for, you know, a birthday party if they wanted.
Right.
So, that's the whole value of what Cohatch brings, it's not about nine to five, you come in here and you work every day, and everyone's filled up, and it's, you know, when you look at like downtown-type of coworking locations, they were built on that kind of model, because you had to go to work and you had to go downtown, that, those days are gone, and we never were in that business, we don't do downtown locations, we do walkable, suburban, urban, walkable communities, that is our bread and butter, that's who we are. I just, I only can tell you is that small business owners don't like to go sit in the office ten hours a day, that's not what they do, and that's, I mean, that, if anyone's been in a small business, you guys would know that you don't want to go sit in one place in a box for ten hours a day, you're going to go in and out as you want, as you choose, and you might not even sit in your, your office, you're going to be out in the open area, because that's just, that's even more fun sometimes to be doing that.
Right.
So, that's just, I, I'm really, I don't know how to be any more earnest about it, and we, we've had these conversations with every board we've gone in front of, and we've never had one come back later and say, "You guys, you know, deceived us, this is messing up our parking."
Nobody, nobody would think that.
No, no, I just want to make sure, you know, we take it very seriously, and we take this relationship with you guys very seriously.
No, I, I, I think the concept is, is cool and great, and I think it's, you know, I, I like it, it's, again, a compatibility. Can we go back to a couple, some of your interior pictures? See, like, okay, so there, again, I, it's, I see a lot of open space.
Yeah, that's the made hole, that's the restaurant side.
Oh, that's the restaurant, okay, I'm sorry, go, go back.
That's still the restaurant.
Still the restaurant. Didn't you have some, oh wait.
Yeah, I thought we did. There we go.
Okay, so like there, again, open, I just, I didn't see in any of your pictures just so many small offices.
But this is like, so this is the second floor, so this is where you see some of the coworking, and some of the little offices up there, second floor coworking, again, see the offices. We don't, like, most coworking companies, they would probably put sixty offices in this, that's not what we do, we're not about jamming a bunch of people into those little glass offices, it's really about creating a community.
It looks jammed, it looks, the picture looks jammed to me, and you know, that's not, I mean, I've got a lot of offices.
Well, you can see here, it doesn't look that way, right? I mean, no one would want, it's got to be something that everybody wants to be in, and that's when you, if you could walk in our Lakeland space, you would totally get it, in like, five minutes walking around.
Why do you have so many small offices if, if everybody would be happier out in the center space?
No, no, because they want it for privacy, you got phone calls, you got, you're doing confidential work on your computers.
I mean, again, the Oxford Exchange has little phone rooms, they call them.
Yeah, phone booths, yeah.
Like, yeah, phone booth rooms.
Yeah, we have that as well.
Yeah, and I saw a, a couple of those, but, again, the, I think the concept of so many offices and, is a concern, it just, it, to me, so I'm sorry, go ahead. and, is a concern. It just, it, to me. So I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, remember, it's a total of, the square footage of the actual offices is about four to five thousand square feet of the entire space.
What's the, what's the square footage of a office?
Sixty-four to a hundred and fifty square feet.
Really small.
But you said, how many, four thousand square feet out of, what's, how much?
About four to five thousand on the, on the floor.
And how much is, how much is upstairs?
The net square footage is of offices.
Of, if you measure all those offices with the actual square footage.
And how much is the square footage of the upstairs?
The upstairs total floor plate is, is about sixty-five hundred gross. Again, then you subtract out the.
But let's, let's clarify. I need to get clarification. How many square feet of the office spaces only, not the open common area, office spaces?
Yeah, we, we haven't measured. It's usually four to five thousand square feet.
Okay. I have a second part. You talked about the scholar.
Go ahead, I may have that.
Oh.
The gross on the second floor is approximately sixty-eight hundred. Let's see. The net. The net for the entire Cohatch space, all of the office spaces, including phone booths, offices, meeting rooms, kitchenette, the net for the entire Cohatch is fifty-eight hundred seventy-two on the second floor.
And that includes all the meeting rooms?
That includes all the meeting rooms, yes. It includes all the common spaces.
The average office is going to be about a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen square meters times thirty.
I don't have calculated office.
Square meters or square feet?
Square feet. So it's about four thousand square feet for just the offices excluding meeting rooms.
My second part to the question, you talked about the, the various scholarship.
Yes.
That you, like a donation, you can come use it. How many offices are going to be dedicated for that type of plan?
That depends on the demand, but it's not, we don't necessarily donate as many of the offices. Offices could be. We have nonprofits that use the offices. What we donate are the, are the coworking scholarships. So those are the coworking memberships is what we donate. And there's selected nonprofits that would also have offices as well. But most of ninety-seven percent of the offices are going to be fully paid commercially because they help, that would, it helps fund us doing the scholarships.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, please. First of all, I applaud your, your efforts for preservation and, and, you know, maintenance of, of that building certainly. And also, as, as aforementioned, the scholarship and community participation and, and integration. My only question is, you, you have other comparative properties, some in the vicinity here and some elsewhere in the country. Do any of those also have the mixed use of restaurant and office? And being that you responded affirmatively, have you seen any overlap concerns with parking? In other words, if businesses run a little late and the restaurant crowd starts a little early, does that, do you see that kind of crossing?
Why we actually do the design in certain locations, and it's particularly in these walkable Main Street communities, is because the symmetry of the businesses are almost, can't say they're opposite, but they're, they're very symmetrical and it really is perfect for us. They complement, they complement what we're already doing. So, for example, if we have a, a corporate event, you know, let's say someone's doing a, you know, fifteen-person meeting, the food and beverage can come over and serve them and they can do, or they have a, a meeting and they're doing a happy hour with here. So it's, it really just creates this incredible community building because meals is how you really create community. That's why we like to do it. It doesn't fit for every location, but when it's walkable like this, which are great walkable downtown like Tarpon Springs, it's a perfect match for it. And they do, because what most people don't realize is the office part actually doesn't create any stress. Most people you would think would be pushing back on the restaurant side, but because it's one hour, two hour in and out, people don't really push back on it. But we don't see any stress from the office side, you know, when we're, we're doing this. And so most times they ask about the restaurant side, which we explain it and they realize most restaurants are the same. It's in and out in an hour or two and it's, it's decreasing that parking stress.
And the restaurant is proposed to be open to the public.
Oh, for sure.
Lunch and dinner, right. And that's, but being all the concerns brought about parking, that's, that's my concern. If you're going to have a preponderance of attendance at the building at times that may overlap, that that may, you know, be a, a point of concern.
Yeah, and because we don't, like, again, if it was a hundred people there every day in their, in their rooms and everyone was working that way, and people all showed up at five thirty to eat and everyone's leaving at five thirty, yeah, I could see that being that, but it's just, it's not our reality in any way, shape, or form.
Maybe you can push the happy hour to the end of the night instead of the beginning.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Do you have any, like, a, a number as far as the percent? You said you can have a membership to use the open space without having one of the offices, right? Do you, is there a percentage of your memberships that are just for the open areas and, in comparison to the thirty offices?
Yeah, you could have anywhere between fifty and a hundred, what we call coworking members. And those people have restrictions on, there's different, four different levels. From, you can use it for eight hours a month, all the way up to you can use it unlimited, which means you can come in anytime, twenty-four, seven, seven days a week. So that all varies based on the membership level that you have. But we typically are going to have, I would see around, in, in this community, it's probably be seventy-five to a hundred, eventually coworking members over the next two years that you would probably have, of which they're usually in once a week, twice a week, on average, most coworking members. Some, some join, they're there once a month because they just, they want to use it for personal use and they don't use it for work. They'll use it for their, you know, their family birthday party. They'll use it for a wedding, you know, a baby shower or something like that. Something where, again, you can't do it in your home and you take a great space like this with a nice meeting room, you can actually celebrate and do things that you normally can't do in your home. So that's, that's really why a lot of people end up with the coworking membership outside of just the work reason.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, I'm getting it, is that I don't think that, until that you just started telling, mentioning these birthday parties, that this was looked at as like an event space, which I think just also opens up a whole new.
Event space is a hundred people. This is, the meeting room can hold twenty people.
Right, but, I mean, you said, so you can pay a membership and then this, depending on whatever tier they're in, they can have a birthday party or whenever they want.
Yeah. It's a, it's what the community wants. This is why we, we do it, but it's not a parking issue.
The community, how, how is it that, what the community wants?
Because our members, when they come in to our space and they say, "Hey", I, they, they come in for, maybe it's, say, they come in for a, a business meeting. Like, wow, this place is awesome. And so then they end up, they join as a member and then they know that they can actually use it for not just work. They can meet there after work for a friend, have a coffee. They have a book club that they want to meet. That's the whole point of the, using Cohatch as a community space. It's not just for going to work from eight to five. That's why you don't have the parking stress because it's not an eight to five heavy-use business. It's different hours of the day, different times. That's why communities love us. That's why we're asking the most communities to come in because they understand that's what their community needs.
Well, I mean, I think in a way, the, the community you're talking to is of Tarpon Springs. So you're talking about a new community. It's a little bit, it's a little bit different.
But we've gotten great feedback from the people in the community we've already interacted with. So they've been very bullish on what we're doing.
So you said the top, the, it was like sixty-five hundred square feet for the, approximately?
Yeah, two floors.
The gross square footage.
And then about four thousand of it is the offices, so.
For both the first and the second floor.
Net.
Up and down.
Yeah, because the, the first floor has a few offices as well.
Right.
Total square footage of all the offices, right around, it's going to be right around four thousand square feet.
And we're ballparking. I haven't, I haven't calculated the net.
And then the, and then the coworking space is really a much, much smaller percentage.
No, it's actually all the open area. So it's, everything else is the coworking area.
Minus, obviously, there's, there's corridor space.
You said four thousand and then sixty-five hundred.
But if you look at these pictures, so this would be like a coworking space here. This is when you come in the entrance to the space.
No, I, I saw the pictures. So have you considered increasing the coworking space and reducing the number of offices? Could, could your model work with less offices and more open space?
We already test the downside of the office space in all of our locations. Again, compared to anyone doing this kind of product anywhere in the country. We have the lowest square footage allocated to private office as, as it relates to them, the coworking, the meeting spaces, the phone booths, these, I guess, full-access space parts of the space. Because it's not, it's not the highest density, it's not a high-density use. We, we need it from a revenue generation standpoint.
Right, no, I understand.
That's the established revenue, so. We've, we already kind of bring it down to the lowest possible because we actually want the flow. We don't want it to be a bunch of offices. We want it to be this open flow, which you feel, even though it looks on a floor plan like it's that, when you actually walk around the space, it doesn't feel like that.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I, I have just a couple. Do you have a limit on the coworking memberships?
Not today because we don't, these, we have lots of locations around a community, so they're just, you don't get, you don't, you don't usually go over a hundred typically in the locations that we've got.
Can members from other locations use this location?
Yes.
And this location has a restaurant, correct?
Correct.
How many seats are you planning for in the restaurant?
Do you have to count? I don't want to give you a fake, wrong number.
Let me look and see if I've got it. I have everything, um, sorry, I have everything calculated with the, the code required occupant factor. That's not necessarily the number of seats.
Okay. Well, I was actually going to ask you about if what you're, okay, okay. So you don't have a number of seats. But I was going to ask you, that was my next question, was what the occupancy limits of the building are, both for your events and for your coworking space, what your, your actual occupancy pursuant to the fire code would be.
The occupancy, um, the, the total allowable occupancy for the use that we have, based on the square footages, is, let's see, is, is two-hundred-eighty-seven. That's both floors and that's obviously, that's a, that's a code requirement that we use typically to size the egress. So that's how we sized the stairs, the stairs for, for exiting. That's not, um, that's, that's not a, a usage number.
Right. So that's your code limit occupancy for building structure is two-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Do you think that based on use, that number's actually going to be lower? Based on how you're designing your, yes.
I've, I've, I mean, I'm, in all my years of architecture, we've never come close to what the code required. It's kind of a, it's a worst-case scenario. Can you exit that number of bodies? It's not meant to be an actual function.
Nope. That was it.
Any further questions for the applicant?
I just, uh, there's a lot of pictures of the open area in the, the restaurant, but like the individual offices, I, I don't know if that meeting room was one of them. I think that, do you?
Okay, like, this is probably, this is probably, that's a meeting room to the left, but to the right, you see the straight ahead. That would be an office. And then to the right would be offices on this right side. So one, two, I think there's like three or four offices in that hallway. We don't take pictures of the hallway because they're, or the office, because there's nothing in them. It's the meeting rooms and the coworking that the renderings illustrate, but the private office is just, there's nothing in them. There's no furniture. We don't provide furniture.
Right, right. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions?
All right, that would get us up to, to the public comment portion of our, our meeting.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a brief break, if we may, for ten minutes and then come back here to, to continue.
Uh, I'd like to take a brief break, if we may, for ten minutes and then come back here to, to continue.